And it was subdivided back in, I think it was 89.
Eighty-nine.
I researched all the correspondence on it.
One could draw a survey of two lots, doesn't mean it's a subdivision.
No, no, no.
It needs approval.
No, we had those correspondence back from then, from the building inspector. What was never done was a site capacity analysis.
Okay. Who yet?
Yeah, it was a different building inspector. But it was absolutely right, what he said at the time. It was a subdivision, it was a legal subdivision. And that's done, and it already shows on the county tax map as two lots and Greenberg has it as separate lots. But what was never done was the site capacity determination.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the board? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No? We're all okay with it? I'm okay with it. So can I have a motion to approve?
Well, I did a resolution.
I'm gonna do a resolution.
Okay, you'll read it first.
Yeah, I think it's important to do the... Whereas in November 2017, Scott Sykes and Miss Burlock Sykes, on behalf of Clifton Place Holdings, the owner of four Clifton Place, applied to the planning board for site capacity determination of the 42,268 square foot lot. Whereas the Sykes own and reside in a single-family residence located at three Clifton Place, which adjoins four Clifton Place. Whereas four Clifton Place lies in the 104 zoning district, and according to the Sykes, no development is planned for the lot at this time, but the Sykes desire confirmation that the site capacity of the lot permits the construction of one single-family house. Whereas the total gross site area for Clifton Place is 42,268 square feet, and the lot includes no rights of way or easements of excess, and has no resource protection features to be deducted, resulting in a net buildable site area of 42,268 square feet, which when divided by 40,000, the density factor for the 104 zoning district exceeds one. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board makes a determination that four Clifton Place has a site capacity of one, conditioned on, one, no physical changes resulting in the presence of a resource protection feature on the lot, and, two, no changes to the zoning codes minimum lot size for the district in which four Clifton Place is situated. If at the time any application is made for construction or development on this site, either, A, the zoning codes minimum lot size has increased, or B, a resource protection feature is developed on the site, the site capacity determination is no longer effective, and the planning board must make a new site capacity determination.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
All right, next item is 2017-2520 East Clinton Ave.
All right, good evening, board. My name is John Scavelli. I'm representing Emily and Benjamin Burley, on behalf of the application for 20 East Clinton Ave. So just a quick overview of the project. I know we came here, but just to run through it again. The proposed addition is for a garage to be added to the property along with additional bedroom and a master suite space above the garage. And the previous meetings, we were looking for a variance for additional coverage, but since then, we've actually reduced the size of the addition to be at the actual coverage that's allowed by zoning. There is one item that we went to the zoning board that required a variance, and that's in regard to the side yard setback. It's an existing condition of the footprint, and the zoning board did approve the addition and the existing non-conforming issue with the side yard setback. In terms of the layout, the main change... The main change is really the width of the addition just getting slightly narrow, and then in terms of the garage doors, now you see a single garage door rather than the two separate ones.
Okay. Any comments from anyone on the board? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? Marion, you have a resolution on this?
Whereas in September 2017, Emily Burley applied for site development plan approval to construct a two-story addition to her house at 20 East Clinton. That proposal would require variances for coverage, FAR, and side yard setback, and the proposed project was reduced so that only a variance for the side yard setback was required. The zoning board of appeals granted the variance at its meeting on November 27th. Han engineering reviewed the plans, and in memorandum dated September 6th, October 3rd, and October 31st, listed a number of issues with the site plan, most of which were satisfactorily addressed in subsequent submissions. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on September 6th, November 1st, and December 6th. It's a type-two action. Resolved, the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled 20 East Clinton Ave, prepared by ResReel Designs, subject to compliance with the December 1st, 2017 Han memorandum.
Yeah, you saw that the Han memorandum just had one item, so the rim grate elevations for the pre-teen community should be provided.
Yeah, yeah, there was one item, yeah, regards to elevations for the rim grate, yeah, provide that information.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
John Malone Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing Bernstein's. This is a very cool project that was in front of you that needed a variance for building coverage and for...
Subtlety.
It's a fence related to the aqueduct buffer. And we received both those variances.
Okay. I think that was, those are the only outstanding matters that we had approved. It's well, subject to going to the ZBA and getting approval. So, any comments from anybody on the board? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No? All right, Marion, do you have a resolution on this?
Yeah. Can I just say, what happened with screening along in the aqueduct, because it was in the buffer, did you jog in and out?
There was screening there, and, yeah, it jogs in and out, and they were, they felt it was suspicious.
And that, that's actually a condition of the ZBA approval. In August 2017, Lisa and Andrew Bernstein applied for a site plan approval to construct a pool, stormwater mitigation system, and fence on their property at Three Fargo Lane, which is located in the view preservation district and adjacent to the old Quoten Aqueduct. The improvements would require variances for coverage and intrusions into the aqueduct buffer. On October 25th, the zoning board of appeals granted variances for coverage and intrusions into the aqueduct on conditions, on the condition, one, that the fence be screened from the aqueduct by using existing trees and planting shrubbery, and, two, that there will be no walkway or other coverage added to the yard, including without limitation between the house and the pool. Han engineering reviewed the plans, and in memorandum dated August 1st and September 6th, listed several issues, and in a memorandum dated September 29th, wrote that all engineering issues were satisfied. Planning board held a public hearing on August 2nd and September 6th. The proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. It's a type-two action under SECA. Resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Bernstein Swimming Pool, prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture, subject to the ZBA conditions listed above.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your approval. John? Next item is 2017-3813 Lewis Road. And Hillary has refused on this matter.
13 Lewis Road.
13.
I'm Michael Lewis, the architect. This is a modest addition over an existing first-floor space. There's no increase to building footprint or site coverage proposed. It's very straightforward. It's well within the setbacks, no variances required.
Here is the...
Here's the first floor, existing plane, the orange square shows where the addition above occurs, that's right here.
Just hold it, I'll look for the white list.
Oh, okay, sure. So basically, just a retrofit of the bathrooms and bedrooms up there, and slight increased space over the existing corner of the building.
I want you to show the front elevation.
Yeah, that's very telling.
Here's the existing elevation, looking at that corner, and here's the north elevation, showing the build-out. So instead of sitting back over this, it just goes straight up.
Any comments from anyone on the board? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No? I think it's okay, there's no need to cover it. I think you saw the Han memorandum, there are several items that were addressed.
Yes, sir.
Part of this. Okay. Marion, you have a resolution on this?
In December 2017, Delina Codie-Berishin and Mark Berishin applied for site plan approval to construct a second-floor addition to their home at 13 Lewis Road. Han engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated December 5th, listed several minor issues. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on December 6th. It's a type-two action under SECA. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Modifications to 13 Lewis Road, prepared by Michael Lewis Architects, subject to compliance with the items listed in the December 5th, 2017 Han memorandum.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second to approve.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Costa. I'm the engineer for Mark and Nancy Mazer, the owners and applicant for this legalization of our existing retaining wall and stone patio on the side yard. One correction I want to make for the record is item number five on the application, it is located in the view preservation zone, even though there's no view obstruction, everything is on the ground. We will require a zoning variance, so our, or your approval is based on us getting a zoning variance for a setback to the patio. Required is four feet, and existing is .3, and we're over on coverage by 18 percent. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So everything is existing, the patio exists?
Everything is existing, there's going to be no physical work done. And what I gave you tonight is two letters from the most affected adjacent property owners having no objections.
Any comments from anyone on the board?
How long has the wall been there?
The wall's been there since about 1999.
I guess that...
Pre-dates the most...
Did you, did you look at anything, the integrity of the wall?
No.
I guess it's been there since 99, I guess.
Yeah, we didn't review anything.
The one thing I was troubled by, one of the notes on it, engineers will not be responsible for anything, essentially what it said.
Excellent.
In the upper-left-hand corner.
Again, this is a legalization, everything's been done. The wall is very small and neutral, it goes from two feet to the maximum height of three.
Okay. That was the only trouble.
You're okay with that?
Yeah. It's been there since 99.
Any comments from anyone on this matter? No? You still need a variance on this.
Correct.
But can we...
I'm sorry, what?
Comment, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I've got...
You have to go up and take the microphone and state your name.
Yeah, Connie Keough, 19 Jaffrey. In terms of the wall, I just happen to think it's a very, you know, beautiful improvement on that corner, which I walk by all the time, and I just express my positive feeling about it as an enhancement of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the public? No? So you still need a variance on this, but we can do a resolution subject to variance being approved.
In December 2017, Mark and Nancy Mazer applied for site development plan approval to legalize an existing retaining wall fence and patio at their house at Three Jaffrey Court, which is located in the view preservation overlay district. The improvements exceed the maximum coverage permitted, and the patio was located within the four-foot setback, requiring variances from the zoning board of appeals. Han engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memo dated December 5th, listed several minor issues with the drawings. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on December 6th. The structures do not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. It's a type-two action under SECA. Resolved that the planning board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawing entitled Existing Retaining Wall and Patio at Three Jaffrey Court, prepared by Stephen Costa, subject to, first, complying with the items in Han's December 5th, 2017 memorandum, and, two, receiving variances from the ZBA for setback in coverage.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Good evening. My name is Saul Fodor, what Christopher Redner, architect, who are here on the behalf...
Saul, you may speak up.
Who are here on the behalf of Bridge Street Park for revision to previously approved lighting plan from the parking lot. The reason for the revision is to cut down on the digging and trenching of the existing parking lot. So the revision calls for fewer light fixtures by three, cut down three light fixtures, but we increased the wattage from 104 watt to 150 watt fixtures, which doubles the lumens by 7,000 lumens. So what we have basically, we...
Excuse me, you better take the microphone.
So what we did was lighting up the perimeter of the lot, and have two fixtures on the building to light up in different direction, and four light fixtures in the middle of the lot. And we proposed a new one on the existing Three Wasimian Building to light up this first row. And in addition to that, there are two existing streetlights, that one of them is out, and the other one is missing. The building management contacted Greg Nelson of the highway department, and he said they are looking into it once they solve the suppliers issue they have, and they would look into the street to light it up. So... So once the streetlights are up, we basically have a general average lighting for the parking lot without further digging into the existing parking lot.
Are these fixtures, these fixtures are different than the ones that you originally proposed?
They are the same, but we increased the wattage from 104 to 150, and that increase would double the number of lumens.
Okay. So they're brighter, but they were all originally even facing down, too?
Yes, they are the same facing down.
Okay.
Would not impact the traffic.
Any comments from anyone on the board?
The ones on the building, I don't mean to be sarcastic, but they're not going to be attached by sandbags?
No, no, no.
Unless they are now.
No, the ones that are timberly ones, they're not going to be used again. The proposed ones would be a wall-mounted fixture, as we submitted achieved in the package. So it's going to be a good-looking fixture, and it's going to be facing down, fixed to the wall, it's not going to be at the roof level. So it's going to be pleasant-looking fixtures.
How high off the ground are the fixtures?
The ones down the steel pole are 25 high, 25 feet. The one on the side of the buildings are 20 feet high, just below the roof line.
Are there any bollards around that fixture that's in the middle of the parking lot? Are there, was there any bollards around it, some protection?
We will, it's not on our plan, but we will provide it. We will revise the plan, and we add it to the plan.
The lucky I have is that by increasing the wattage, the lumens is that the glare is going to be significantly more in front of this, whereas when it's typically gone, especially on a parking lot like this, it's more of an even light all the way through, so it doesn't seem like there is a hot spot in that one location. And one of the attributes of what this temporary thing that you did was that, in essence, it's lighting it from almost in an indirect way, so that when you're driving there or parking, the glare isn't in your face. But if your lumens are going to be similar to what you have now on those sandbags, that's going to be quite bright to see. So that's why typically when they do parking lots, they try to kind of even it out more, so that it is more illuminated throughout, as opposed to this burst that, what you're proposing, so.
The one in the middle that you talked about?
That's the one I'm...
Yeah, right. When I talked to the lighting consultant, when they talked to me about increasing the wattage, that would affect driving on the street glare, and he did not think so at that time. He basically said we should stick with this plan.
Do we have anything in our post that, that...
I'm a business person. I'm just saying that I would disagree with that, but, you know, I'm not a lighting, I won't talk about what he said, but just know through experience.
Let me ask, the ones that are up on the roof with the sandbags, they're more or less horizontal, they face outward, and these, you said they're going to face downward?
Yes.
So would that reduce the eye contact if it's facing down?
It's more controlled, the one on the roof, they basically all fixtures, which...
Well, if you look up there, it hits you right in the face, but luckily it's...
Right, what they're doing with this one is by having one place, they want large help, faces down.
Right, but they want a large help, so it's a big spread. You'll see it.
I'm sure I'll see it.
But we could reduce it if the board would agree to give us an approval.
That comes a problem, they can change the vote.
But, I mean, the thing that I see is that it doesn't look like it's very even light. My assistant's saying, you have these hot spots, you have the one big hot spot right in the middle. And what if you were to break that middle fixture up, and put another one going directly west out towards the water, at that end of the parking lot, and then even come back east a little bit, and put another single fixture in the parking lot? So you get some even lighting, rather than having that one bright hot spot right in the middle.
It's hard to do that, that's...
I understand, but, you know, it...
Well, the reason for that, four fixtures in one spot, was basically to limit the digging, limit the digging and trenching of the parking. But again, we're open to modification case as a condition.
Yeah, I just think it's also a lost opportunity for your client, too, because one of the nice aspects of going there, especially at night to go to a restaurant, is when you come and when you go, you actually see across the river. And I'm afraid with something like this, it's going to make the glare a bit more than what you're used to. But that's, that's just me.
Any comments?
Is there a light bulb that is not 150, but 125?
Yes, there is. We could bring it back to 104, and you could do it as conditionally approved on 104.
Yeah, but see, what they typically do is that they try to do is a dark sky, which I don't think this is anyway, but they also cut baffles on them, so that the light goes down, so when you're looking up at it, you're not looking up at this hot spot. And that's why they do it evenly dispersed around. And if you see it in a nice parking lot, that you'll see that the light is just spilling exactly where the cars are. And this is going to be similar to what they have now, just, yes, up from above, but splashing out, and there's going to be kind of kierseciros that happen. I don't really care about that, it's about you looking up at this thing, and then walking, and all of a sudden, the light is still in your face. So that's my concern, but...
So when reducing the...
No, because if they're using, because they're using it as a single source in one place, whereas they need to spread it out.
Right.
Where they're not using these baffles that will then throw the light down in a, in a more...
What are you proposing to do? You're proposing to dig one ditch from that building to the north diagonally across the parking lot to get to that one fixture?
Yes.
So why not do a second one and break the two of them up, and don't do it right there?
Right there, okay. Yes, that would be fine, we'll do this, and we'll take the other one out further.
How's that?
Yeah, and put baffles in it, so that you're not glaring down. Great. Better than what you have.
We'll revise it and submit it to the board that we see.
Yeah, I think that's, is that better? Yes?
Either way.
Okay. Nothing? We don't, we don't have a reso... Well, we have a resolution, but it'll be a resolution based on this.
I mean, you could modify it, you could, you know, I mean, it's, you're all okay with it if we say subject to revising the plan so that, but you have to explain to me exactly what you wanted to do.
Come back with it, come back with the site plan, with the...
The change.
The change, yeah, let us see it, and then they'll have to probably have the resolution next.
Trying to catch time before seasonal season.
Or wintertime, or before freeze? So... What's the language that we want in here?
Well, here, I'm...
Want you to read what you have to say.
Okay, just, I'll go through the beginning, then we'll just stay at the subject two if you want. Bridge Street Park in May 2016, which is a site plan, a development plan approval to construct a deck on the second floor riverside of the pavement building, stairway on the north side of the building located at Four West Main. The approved plans including a lighting plan. In November 2017, applicant applied for approval of a revised lighting plan in order to minimize trenching and digging in the adjacent parking lot. Han engineering reviewed the application and plans, and in a memorandum dated yesterday raised one issue with the plans. Then we held a public hearing on November 6th, or December 6th. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approved the revised lighting plan entitled Parking Lot Lighting, prepared by Kristoff Redner, and the light, and the plan prepared by RAB Lighting, subject to compliance with the December 5th, 2017 Han memorandum, and subject to revising the plan.
For the, what would you call them? For the lighting fixture, lighting fixture in the middle of the parking lot?
To include one.
To include two fixtures, to break that into two fixtures.
At the same spot?
No, no.
I meant you meant in between.
No, to revise the lighting plan to include two fixtures, would you say between the building?
Two fixtures, instead of the one showing...
Equally spaced between the east and west boundaries.
Two fixtures evenly spaced between...
East and west.
If you're worried about digging, right, that's what your concern is?
Between east and west.
Oh, it's the owner's concern.
Right, so why don't you just leave it at that, and then you can come back with the proposed fixtures that you're, you wanted to use. We give you a location, so you can dig, and then you just have to come with, with new cuts from rats about stuff that's a little bit more sensitive to the glare. And then you just have to come with, with new cuts from rats about stuff that's a little bit more sensitive to the glare.
And get approval the way it is, with the four fixtures?
No.
With the separate, um...
Your concern is you want to get approval tonight?
Approval to start.
Right, and so, and your concern is about digging, right? So by doing this, by saying that we're allowing you to have two poles evenly spaced?
Yes.
In the same line?
Yeah, same line, yes.
Okay, there you go. And then you can come back next month?
Yes.
And with a catalog cut of the fixtures that you're proposing and the lumens that you're proposing, knowing the concern about trying to make it so that there is less glare for the tenants, the people that are parking there.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So no resolution?
Yeah, but then we... Yeah.
You just say subject to approval, you say here are these two locations and then the actual fixture is subject to approval. Why the money work?
You guys want approval, okay. Well, no, but then if there's that subject too until the planning board approves it, I can't, I can't give them a permit.
Yeah, some of the A R B is a little bit of a law.
Isn't it the A R...
Can they dig a trench?
If this is approved, you send them to the A R B, right? Isn't it the A R B that approved, they're the ones that approved the fixtures last time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but they didn't approve the lighting spread.
Not the spread, just the fixtures.
Well, we approved it the last time based on the original lighting fixtures.
Yes, they are the same fixtures, but we increased...
But it had a lower...
Those same fixtures, we can probably avoid the A R B.
They're same fixtures, but we increased the wattage.
So you're going to reduce the wattage to the original wattage?
Right.
To one hundred and four.
Hundred and four, all fixtures?
Right.
Okay.
And break it in half, and break it into two fixtures.
By putting an extra post in, do you lose parking spaces that may be necessary if for another reason?
No, it's going to be between the homes.
Okay.
It's going to be on the same line, this, you can, you can take it either, either east and west, here and there. It's going to be on the same line, just another cut.
You're right with that, Ed?
You ready for me?
Yeah. I never get ready.
What about, I'm still a little confused, but let me get this part.
So basically going to be doing the digging, hooking up the lines and we to approve the fixture again?
No, you're going to go back to the fixture that we approved the last time. If you need to see it again, I don't think I need to see it again, we're going to go back to the original fixture.
If he wants to do the digging before it gets, before it freezes, he needs this.
He's using the same fixture, so the only thing you really want to see is the revised one.
And when is he going to start in there?
Well, now wait a minute, does this plan have the old fixture or new fixtures?
It's the same fixture now as last time.
It's in this plan, okay.
The street fixture is the same, but on the building fixtures are the same model, just a different style of wall.
Okay, yeah, okay, but nothing that we're discussing tonight that makes it different from this, it's just the, just the base and whole.
The wattage is going to be reduced.
Right.
Yes.
Two fixtures evenly spaced between east and west, and we'll have to say with lower wattage, right?
Can you stop?
Right.
Your plan has wattage of one fifty, right?
Yes.
Okay, so add with wattage...
One oh four.
Of one oh four each instead of one fifty. What's not in here is the coming back next one.
I don't think he really needs the comeback, I think the idea is that he goes back to the original wattage and he spreads the fixtures out. So he reduces the concentration of the light and spreads it more easily.
You got case, sir? If you can read this, yeah, I'll retype this for the...
Have a motion?
Motion.
To approve, revise the resolution. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is thinking of work.
Yes.
So that works more probably.
Thank you. Next item is 2017 dash thirty-three, thirty-three Dearman Close.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name's Tim Cronin, I'm here with Pedriak Stein Schneider regarding the application for a site development plan approval for the curios on thirty-three Dearman Road in the village of Irvington. Since the last meeting, we received a comment letter from Han Engineering, which we feel as though we've addressed with the current submission, which you can see here, which is colored with the proposed house driveway. Pretty much the areas of disturbance in the light green and then the more or less undisturbed areas in the dark green. There's actually a plan that shows the limited disturbance, but it follows closely the colors. Earlier today, we received a memo from Han Engineering with a few items and having looked at those, I didn't have a chance to speak with Mr. Von about that, but the comments are very technical in nature and seem as though, you know, fairly straightforward for us to address. One, one comment that Patty will probably be able to speak to more than myself is pertaining to the building height, the house height. And because we are on a parcel that has a steep slope, there's, I guess, an alternative method to determine the building height. And taking advantage of that alternative method, we do actually meet the height requirements. We've also done our coverage calculations and are below the limits set forth for this zone. So if there's any questions from the board, we'll be happy to address them.
I think why don't you address the height issue, because that was one of Han's comments, and if you want to comment, I have.
The village, Pat Stein Schneider, Gotham Design. The village has provisions where if the area within the building envelope where the building is being located exceeds fifteen percent, it allows the use of the grade plane instead of the lowest point of grade to be the measuring point. So by that, we have, what is it? Yeah, thirty-three point four feet is the height from the average grade where thirty-five feet is permitted. There's an overriding provision in there though, that under no conditions can it exceed forty feet. So measured from the lowest point of grade, we're at thirty-nine point nine. And we've actually done that from three eighty-seven. We removed some pieces of the house at one point, slid it back, so we're actually at three eighty-eight, so we're a foot shorter than that. So we're at thirty-eight point nine.
Don, do you have any comments about that yet, or have you now?
Well, you had taken it from the top corner down to the bottom?
Of the house.
So they had that house. We need to, it needs to comply with the average grade around the entire apartment. So, but you need to relook at that.
Okay, I mean...
You typically see a topo plan of the areas of the percentages highlighted that exceed fifteen percent.
Sure.
You've thought this before?
Yeah, that's not a problem. I mean, one other thing while I've got a mic, we did get the credit's signed, stamp, signed and everything today with, he was waiting till he had the title company before he sealed it. So we're all set with that and I'll send that up to you.
Not to get back to the procedural issues, but where, are you the architect?
Yeah.
For this? So I would prefer, so that we're clear about all this, that you're the one that's representing this in this, in whatever way it is, not Patty, okay? So for us, it is important that the architect who is involved in this is actually presenting and showing the work and also going to be responsible, I assume, for construction of this.
I'm actually only responsible for code compliance, I review it for...
So you're not going to be...
I'm not the designer, so...
So... Our concerns, or at least, there's been a history of projects that have been done, that then during construction, things get deviated from and stuff doesn't get back to us in time for it to be resolved. We're trying to circumvent that. So what we're trying to do is make it so that whatever is presented here is actually then, someone is responsible for making sure that that's at least observed as being built that way. And there aren't decisions made in the field that are then different than what was approved. And if they are, then they're brought to the attention of the building's person. And that is not your job, that you're not...
No, I, I'm responsible for anything that has to do with the code compliance, so if that's, you know, what you're asking.
So who's going to handle construction management?
Nobody who's an architect.
No, no, we're not asking for that. What we're asking for is that if you are responsible, if you're sealing these things, that then you're responsible to make sure that what's built out there is to your plans.
Right.
And you're going to be responsible for that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to be on site?
No.
No?
No.
Well, then how are you going to be responsible for what's built if you're not on site?
Who's doing the construction management for the project?
Uh, the contractor.
Contractor on the job is Bob Marinkovic and we have an engineer, an architect, a landscape architect, we're all involved in it. They'll all be on the site doing site inspections, they're not going to be clerk of the work sitting in the site. Nobody's going to be doing that.
Again, if you could, specifically what happens here, it's happened before, is that plans are approved and then it's built in a different manner. And we're trying to make that not happen anymore. And so we've talked about this ad nauseam and I just don't want to go through it yet again, because it's now been numerous times that this has happened. And what it does is it basically defeats the purpose of this board. So we don't want that anymore. So we need to have someone who is here and virtually everyone else who comes here is responsible all the way through and understands what's going on. It just so happens when it's this, typically what happens here is that this doesn't, it falls through the cracks. So it's happened enough that we don't want this to happen anymore. So we're hoping that that's what you're going to provide on this project. And we're not, I'm not asking you to be a construction manager, I'm asking you to do what a responsible architect would do. Is that they'll make sure, they'll visit the site and observe the site to make sure that what is being built is, is to the plans that they approved, got approved. So that's what we're asking if that's going to happen.
That is the, that is the purpose of the architect in this case.
Correct, I'm just, I just want to know that that's what, that's what's going to happen here on this project.
I assume it will. I mean, I have confidence in Gotham Design, I've worked with them for many years and I don't trust...
I guess you're missing the point. The point is this, is that you're signing this, you're sealing this project, we're looking for you, not Gotham. We're looking for you to take responsibility to, that the plans that are approved here will be carried through construction. That's what we're looking for.
Does Cronin Engineering have a play on site inspection?
I'll be performing, I'll be performing the site inspections sort of work outside the house. You know, the site grading, the utilities, the retaining walls, I'll be doing things from outside wall of the house out.
Tim, you'll be signing the C O F A David?
If they build according to this plan, absolutely.
How do you know they're going to build according to the plan? If they're not doing the inside of the building?
Well...
That becomes us the problem, it might have to work out.
Which is not a problem.
We've only, our C O F A David has one design professional signing it and it's usually the one who does the site.
All right. And that's, and that's a form unfamiliar, but so pertaining to the site, I'll, I'll review and sign off on that if they follow the plan.
And Tim is very particular about signing off on that. We've had issues in the past.
I do have a question of more specificity. Last time I questioned the, the fence has the most prominent thing to see from the road and I noticed in the recent mission, he made, somebody made a statement that it's been moved back and there's plantings to, to screen the fence. But could you illustrate where that planting may be, I don't...
The landscape architect Steve Lopez is here and I'd rather have him opine on that, but on our plan, you can see the original location of the fence is the light red line. And the existing proposed location is a darker black line, but if you want to put your landscape plan out.
I think you're all familiar with the landscape plan, I'm sure it's in your packages. From Pond Lane and wrapping around up the driveway and also going over to the east side of Pond Lane and the driveway, we have created kind of woodland planting with significant major trees, also minor trees and shrubs. That should screen the fence along the Pond Lane side of the property.
Was, is it a mixture of deciduous and evergreen?
Yes, there's, there are red oak, there's Sarus canadensis, which is, I'm always thinking in terms of Latin names, apologize. Which is red bud, we've got some lower shrubs, some mountain laurel and spice bush. And we also have some evergreen trees in here. It's a, uh... Again, I have to go back here and look at the common names, white spruce. I like to use white spruce, try to stay away from Norway spruce, Norway spruce is not a native, try to keep with as many natives as we can. And so the spruce has a, has a sharp needle that the deer don't tend to like too much. And the white spruce is a little different, it's got that kind of bluish green color, a little bit like, a little bit like the, the Colorado spruce, but it's not that stiff kind of look that isn't really native to the area.
Is the, are the plantings on both sides of the fence or are they all on the inside of the fence?
Well, these plants, yeah.
On the outside, I'm just trying to...
Correct.
Between the road and fence, so that's the fence up there.
Correct. You know, their plantings are on the other side, they're more designed to complement the house, but there's a significant planting along the, the street frontage here. And also extending over here where we don't have the fence, but just to get some continuity.
So do you think that, that when I drive along that road, I will not see that fence?
I don't think that when you drive along any road, you're not going to see some view of a fence, especially in the winter months when there's, when some of the vegetation is without leaves.
Yeah, we had another project here a couple of years ago that was a pool and there was a big concern about the visibility of this fence. And it was worked out and actually it was done quite effectively so that one doesn't even see the fence. So the first thing I saw on these plans was that, yes, you're putting down some vegetation, some...
Correct.
Fairly large trees and some bushes and things like that interspersed. This fence is uphill from that. And I think the concern was much more from the road, that one doesn't see this fence. So we were hoping that, at least I was, that the fence itself was going to be masked a little bit better.
Was the difference in the elevation between the plantings and the fence?
Well, the, the departure drops off, we're about probably, very similar to where the plans are, but they might be anywhere from two feet to six feet.
Even more, I mean, if you, if you add here two, four, six, eight, ten, but then the tree you're proposing here is sixteen to eighteen feet. So essentially the, the...
The canopy of that tree will actually shield the fence better than if it was down by the... Tree will actually shield the fence better than if it was down by the, the trunk of the tree.
No, but it wouldn't, the point is that this is again from the perception of the road, okay? So when I'm driving by...
But your roads sit down even further.
Down even further, is that I'm going to see directly through your trunk and whatever...
Well, the major trees are limbed up typically to about four feet, so...
Well, how many evergreens there are? What's, it's hard to tell what's evergreen and what's deciduous there.
Well, the, the, the mountain laurels are evergreen, the, the white spruce is evergreen, the rest of these plantings are deciduous. So I'd just like to, to say one thing about, about using evergreen screens and fencing. To, to me, looking at a solid row of evergreen trees is about the most unnatural thing you can see in the woods, especially when the woods aren't like that. The woods around here aren't heavy Norwegian spruce forests, they're a mixture of mostly deciduous trees. And once you start putting a line or let's say arbori or whatever it is along a fence line, to my eye, that's a lot more disturbing and unnatural looking than it is to have some views of fencing interspersed seasonally and around some of the plantings that are there. It's just, you know, it's my, my...
I would agree with you and I suggest a, a font address, I don't remember who it was, but it was done... Fargo Lane, that was done precisely what you're talking about because it was done not as a, as a hedge like in the Hamptons. It was something that was natural, but it masked the fence quite effectively.
Even if you do it in a V, you set them...
Actually, Mr. Malone was involved in that project.
You know, in terms of getting it closer to the fence, if I remember, there's rocks...
It's very rocky, it's very thin, so I was just going to say, one of the biggest problems here is it's a dry site.
It's out, if, if the fence is on top of... Yeah, it's a rock.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very dry site and personally I, I think we're gonna, I think we're really stretching the limits. Red oak will, will, will grow very well in dry soils and the, the plants that I'm showing will, mountain laurel you see in the woods, especially if you go up into Grand Mountain Park, but I just, I don't, I don't see the soils here and the water being adequate to support a heavy evergreen presence along this fence line. We had deep rich soils and it was...
If you drive through Bedford, you'll see just an army of deer fences all over the place and it becomes such a visual impact of, of really kind of destroying the natural landscape. So all I'm asking for is that you figure out a way to, to mask this better than putting stuff down low and this being up here. And I suggest you look at that Fargo Lane to see what, how they kind of interspersed it so that it wasn't so that you had this row of whatever you're doing here and then this...
We can certainly look at, I just kind of want to have your expectations be somewhere that's unrealistic. There are a few plants that we can use that will survive in this kind of soil type and rock and I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm really very concerned and I just refuse to go down a road where we put in a bunch of plants that are deadening here. Because then what, what happens? A landscape contractor's responsible are coming and replacing them, six months later they're all dead again. And there's a limited number of plants that we can use with, with deer and like I said, this isn't the first job I've done out in the woods either. And, and I don't want to raise the expectations that we can come back here with a solid row of evergreen plants that's going to be placed in a way that they're going to survive and, and they're going to look well.
We don't want the solid row.
No, I, I agree with you that there's arbori rows or...
And the arbori are susceptible to deer damage, they're all eaten up first three, four feet, just chopped down by the deer.
Brows lined.
Yes.
I guess what we have here is just, we all agree, we just want you to come up with a way that...
We get there.
We get there, yeah. So I, I'm not disagreeing, what you're saying I agree with, okay? I don't want a Hampton's hedge on this. What I, I think would be good, I'm, for specificity of the street, is that when someone is driving down that street, they're not going to feel like they're in Bedford where there's just endless, endless amounts of eight foot high deer fences. And there's got to be a way, rocks and not, to mask this in a way. And it's up to you to kind of, you know, convince us that you've done that in the best possible way.
So I think you want me to look at the plants again?
Yeah, take a look and see, see what you can do.
See what we can do.
If I remember, the fence is not a six foot white vinyl fence, it's...
It's a, you know, black coated.
Five foot, it's vinyl coated, black.
But it's a chain link fence, not a solid fence.
No.
That's good.
Yeah, just on a related issue, because I just happened to be doing the minutes before the meeting. Last time the board had asked, and I didn't, I didn't see them in the pack and maybe you brought them, what, asked for elevations from the street?
We did ask them, yes.
Yeah, for what the, what the, what it was going to look like from the street. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think...
Not the plantings, elevation.
Yeah, I think it would be good to do one of those.
And we cited that there were others who did properties up here who we asked the same thing for.
Which we did.
And they produced, yeah. And, yeah, maybe you were one too, isn't there?
So part of that, but, but, part of that is...
As you're driving along Pond Lane and Tim indicated what some of the elevational differences are, to see the house, what angle of view would you be looking at? Tim, something like, like this?
Exactly.
So...
Right here, the grade's 364 and basement's a 389, so...
Well, you have the section here, why don't you pull up the section?
I was, I was looking at something close to section BB and where is, well, here's BB here is from the road.
Is that from Pond?
Pond Lane is here. Looking up to the house, so it's actually, it's, it's not that, it's, you'd be surprised when you're out in the field how, you know, one on two slope is that and I don't even know if it's that steep the whole way. So you're probably looking at something along this line because this scale is, it's a true scale, there's no distortion horizontal to vertical, so, you know, that's the line, right?
Where's the chain link fence, is it right behind that first row of plants?
Right here.
It's down below compared to...
Right, the, the rest of the house does, does slip up.
The road is, you're not, so what's the difference in elevation from the top of the fence to the, the road?
Elevation 376 and 364, 12, if that's the top. Yeah, it looks like that's, that would be the top.
So it's about a 12 foot difference from, if you're standing on, well, that's from the base of the road.
Right, so you're going to be wherever, yeah.
Four feet, five feet tall.
If you're walking or driving.
If you're driving, so you're at two feet or five feet, so you got about seven, seven feet up to the top of the fence.
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask this Patty, this house is in a very prominent location and Tim and Steve, it's in a very prominent location, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Laura Wickel.
And actually your, your front yard, well, your, it's actually, yeah, your front yard is right along Pond Lane and there isn't much room on the site, it's a very steep slight site. Are there any plans, do you have a buyer for this house?
I'm actually, that's the role I'm in here, because I'm the agent for Ken and Natasha Corio, who have signed a contract to purchase this, they're looking to close on December 18th and this has been specifically designed for them. And one of the things that, they're very careful to watch these meetings on television, so I want to make sure I've mentioned the thing that is of most importance to them because they made a major point of it to me, is they've got three very young children. They love the property, they want to have it safe, they want their kids to be able to run around the yard, so the fences have been positioned so that they're back from these, what are kind of like little cliffs. I mean, it doesn't show up really in the topo because Paul's got the topo following the topo line, but all through the woods you've got these, you know, fairly good sized rocks that are cutting out. The positioning of the fence specifically in certain places, I think it shows here, there's actually a significant amount of rock that's on the, on the roadside of that, that fence. So when you go by on the road, you're going to look, you're going to see the rocks, you're going to see the planting that Steve's laid out. I think you're going to have a tough time seeing the fence, but I appreciate Steve's answer, which is the real one. You go in January or February, if you sit there and you look for the fence, you'll be able to find it, but you're not going to be overwhelmed with, with when you pass. I don't think anybody, the, the fences that we did on 15, 14 to 13 are much more prominent than this and I don't think anybody notices them at all.
I wasn't really getting into fence so much, so I was getting at, is that this is a very prominent location, they have a front yard that faces Pond Lane and that's because of the conditions of that site, there really isn't much room there if somebody wanted to put in a pool. And one of the things that the comprehensive plant committee is looking at right now, which I'm a member, the chairman of the ZBA is a member and also the chairman of the ARB as well as the five members of the board trustees, one of the things we're looking at is concerning that developers come in here and build houses almost to the maximum coverage and then have their, the owner come back in within a year and say they want to put a pool in and they need a variance for it.
Right.
And that's, so we're looking at that and one thing we're looking at is that we're looking at putting a five year moratorium on that, on any, any new house that's built. No one could come in for a variance.
And this house, the site covered we have here is 800 square feet, 700 square feet less than what's required.
Right, but, but you'd be putting it in the front yard, that's the only place you could put a pool and you'd require a variance for that.
But let's, let's talk about that a little bit. This is actually, it's called Pond Lane, it's actually on this person's property. It's an easement that comes through, it's a driveway that serves two houses, it's not an independent street. The, the front of this house legally is Dearman Close, which was the road that was built as part of the subdivision and that has to come in from this side. We actually have a restriction that says, I mean, the one that killed me was 13. 13 would be a lovely house if you were able to come off of Pond Lane up to it instead of driving down the hill, but we were restricted from being allowed to have curb cuts or any kind of, to treat Pond Lane as the front of anything. So that's why it's really the back of this house.
It's the back, but it's the main access to a number of houses and...
Took two.
Going past.
Is it a right of way?
It's, it's an easement, it's not a right of way.
It's a way.
It's a way, but it's not, it's, it's not a, it's not, it's an easement that traverses lots, one, 16, 15, 14 and 13.
Who plows it?
Uh, the HOA. There's no, there's no public street to Dearman Close or to Dearman Park for that matter. The High School Drive is not a public street.
It does not have to be a public street.
Doesn't have to be a public street.
I'm looking it up now, but it does have to be a public street.
Well, all I know is back when we were trying to do a public street, we were told we couldn't do that.
No, 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 in terms of...
In terms of finding our...
What Patty's looking at, it needs to be a public street, it's just a street.
It's a street.
I'm sorry, anyone... Did we settle the construction management aspect? Tim, you're going to handle the exterior? As, as the representative for the client? And you're going to be on site?
I will make periodic inspections.
Actually, I was thinking we add to the resolution that the CO affidavit be signed with no alteration by their prospective architects and engineers.
Doesn't it already say that?
Yes, but we've had disputes in between architects and engineers who are signing it in the past because of site development plan, but we prefer the engineer, so Tim's fully aware of it, so...
I mean, I'd have no problem with having...
You have, you have, you're two professionals after...
Right, and if this board...
I would be my suggestion to solve...
Right, and if this board is more comfortable with it, I'd have no problem committing that Tim will do all the inspections that have anything to do with the site and Laura will do all the inspections that have anything to do with the house. And since Steve is here too, Steve can come in and he's, he's good with this stuff, he helps me position stuff, so...
No, we'll just have the landscape architect sign off on it.
He can sign off on the...
Floating trees.
Steve can take the full responsibility.
Floating trees.
They're not floating, they're in the distance. I shouldn't like grade out the hillside or something.
Any other comments from any board members? Any comments from anyone in the public? No, okay, well...
Is there anything that you're looking for besides that, doing some renderings from the street looking at, or actually I shouldn't say street now, from the driveway looking up the hillside and showing those different views? Anything else you need? Do you have it, Doug? No, Doug wants, wants it signed and sealed. He's, he received copies of it, but they weren't signed and sealed, so...
A closer look at the park, at the landscape, landscape.
Yeah.
What's her name, our landscape?
Who still had no comments?
Which is a good thing, right? I mean, she had a comment with me, she didn't like something. Take a look at it to see if you can enhance it a bit. Well, I mean, I discussed this with Steve. I'm not sure that it's inadequate now, but if it can be enhanced, that would be fine. I, I asked Steve the exact same question and I asked him, isn't there something that would grow? And you answered the question, you remember what you said?
Yeah, I said, you have a hard time growing poison ivy on top of the woods.
You grow moss. Poison ivy.
And lichen doesn't grow that tall.
What is lichen? It's not moss, is it?
No, it's not. Lichens are different than mosses here. Not all of them, but they're mostly that gray stuff you see on the rocks and sometimes on the trees. The mosses tend to stand up. That's, that's a sort of general layman's answer, but this month's, the last month's the X State conservation, they say, well, they are called lichens.
I could have thrown you in my outdoor shower. That's not a good thing, it's easy, that's not good.
You should be very concerned if you find a growing on you one day.
So we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Sorry. Next item is 2017-31, Hermits Road.
General of personal and architecture, representing Christian Otto. This is a proposed house for the end of Hermits Road. Just as a starting point, the, the goal of the house, the client very much was to develop a house, a modern house on this site that limited disturbing trees and limited, limited disturbance of sight to the maximum degree possible. The, when this project was subdivided, it showed a septic system that required a tremendous amount of fill and a removal of a lot of trees. So the goal here and what we're trying to do, so if there's other comments around this, was to try to limit the disturbance and... We received comments from Han, we can go through those. If you guys want a quick overview of the project first and then we can go through those.
Sure.
Much as quick overview. So... Generally, you can see the distinct, the distinct side of these larger rock outcroppings that you guys are looking at, similar to the area of Hermits Grave. There's sort of a lot of exposed rock in between these two rocks, there's sort of a valley that's headed that way on the side. So we're focusing the house between these two rock outcroppings and access to the house is from the end of Hermits Road. Here, we're looking for a way to get access up there in a very natural way that didn't involve additional grading and, and again, the trees. So the tree removals that we've shown here are in the area of the house mostly. This is actually the footprint of the house and there are a few removals on the way up the driveway and, but that's really the limit. So the area of the removals that were out here that would have been associated with the septic system, we, we think we've helped with that. And then also there was a, a Y turn that was part of the original submission, which took down all the trees in this area. And then also in the, there's a drainage area that we're proposing here where we're trying to limit any impact on the trees. There was a note, while we're on the trees, there was a note in the, in the comment here about an arborist report, the... an arborist report. The conditions that are shown on this were developed by our arborist at care of trees, so we can provide a letter from them indicating that the information that was on this was from one of them. So if that would, if that would meet the concern. Your concern is that you want the conditions to be from an arborist, not from a layman?
Right.
So again, this is the, the house positioned on the lot. It's similar to the location of the, the house that was during the subdivision process, where the, the house as it was conceived, except this house is sort of fit into the, into the landscape a little bit better, rather than trying to be a center-hall colonial, sort of dropped into this. We are showing, and this is also the landscape plan, so the goal is to keep a very natural environment. We are doing sort of a little modern woodland garden right in the courtyard of the house we're showing, but otherwise, we're showing some additional screening. And I did hear today that, you know, these, these forests do not include a lot of evergreens, but we are showing some evergreen additions here, things that we think that could make it with the canopy, and just sort of to provide some variety there.
As the care of trees will do this?
Yes. So I mean, I, I think, given the cover, these trees, some of them, it's hard to get evergreens to be really robust. What we've shown is some hemlocks and some stuff that are understory trees that can...
Where are the closest buildings to the proposed house?
There's the water tower right here. That's the closest one. And then Peter Cox's house is over here. I think the location of the house and the grading and the hillside, I think that's screening from the nearest house without the trees.
Before you get off that, you talk as if the septic system is in the past, that any resolution is to...
Right, so, so just as I was gonna wait for, but we're basically going with a force main is what we're proposing at this point. So there's, you can see here, there's a little pump station that would be in the ground there, and then there would be an inch and a half or inch force main. Cronin, engineer who developed the force main for the project at the end of Hermits Road, is developing an extension for us at this point, so that's where we are on that. This is showing the current ground floor plan, if you guys have had a chance to look at it. It's a very, it's very open to the south. It has a, a large wall of glass facing south. It does have some interesting features. It has an interior climbing wall. So we have a three-story climbing wall along that side. It's part of the design. If there's questions about what that's about, it's because there's a climbing wall.
It's interior.
Interior, yes. And I've seen some discussion of what this wall is, and it's nothing that you or I will ever get up, from what I've, what I've seen.
You're right about that.
Yeah, I know, but I, it's...
Most of what they do is site development planner.
I don't know. I'll move on. I just, this is quick. We'll move on. Right, and then so this is, this is the second floor.
We have the under on line 30.
Right, I'm sorry. Sorry, the block, this block is taller.
I'm telling you, ours upstairs.
Right, right, this block. The garage in this area is one-story, and this is the larger block of the house. So the, the elevation of the house facing the south is the larger elevation, and then here you can see a lot of the, the house is one-story. So that's where we are.
There will be help for John's site plan to show on the site plan the trees that are to be removed. You can't really tell from the site plan. You have the demolition plan, but then that doesn't relate well to the site plan when you show the building. It would be good to be able to see all those trees that are being xed out on the site plan, for the house and for the driveway.
We could do a composite. So you could see, because this would probably be too cluttered for the site plan, but you could do a composite where either, either we outline the, on the tree removal plan, we could put the outline of the building, whatever is...
Whatever, just overlay the site plan with the demolition plan, so we can see that better what's being removed. And then also, you have that list of trees to be removed. Are all these trees, have they all been tagged and numbered? Then the ones that are to be removed? If not, they should be.
You want them tagged at the tree. Yeah, we can, we can do that. I mean, we were gonna do that.
And then related to that table that you have there, too.
Right, so we could, we could tag them and number them, so that they could be easily identified through a walk-through. That's what you're looking for, like a walk-through.
And then also, the trees that are to be protected. That's why I wanna see the trees that are to be removed, and how it fits in with the site plan to make sure that there aren't other trees that are gonna be close to that, that may be compromised by the developer.
There was, there was one question, which we, you know, I'm just thinking of some of the things that are relevant. There was a question about a specific tree that may be impacted from what we're showing here. The tree here that was called out is potentially being impacted. What we're trying to do here, the driveway is a gravel drive, so it's not, you know, it's sort of a surface driveway. So we're, we're looking to have, even though the driveway is close to it, it's not that we're gonna go down six inches and, you know...
Well, but, but what's it gonna cause? It's gonna be gravel. Is it gonna be asphalt or is it gonna be, you know, agged or?
Well, it's gonna, it's probably gonna be two layers, right? Where there'll be a heavier gravel below and a finished layer of gravel. But we're looking for, I bring this up because we're looking for approaches that are lower impact in terms of...
So aren't you gonna still have to dig down?
You do. But in areas, and we talked about this with the arborist about like, well, how we could do that, because it's curvaceous in that area, it's different than putting pavement on top of existing roots. So if you hand dug an area, and even if you disturb some area of roots, it's a different kind of impact on the tree than it would be if it was natural.
Ask them.
So then, maybe it would make sense to go through some of these, not all of them.
But it seems to me that the, the energy business is by the client, by the village, is sort of aligned here. But it's actually more in there to keep to the ethos of this. It is to preserve more than, than, that's what I get.
Yes, yeah. I think, I think the...
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, the, the client very much would love to live in the site exactly the way it is, if we could find a way to...
Get the trees.
Right, right. And there are people living in the woods nearby.
I think the tagging of the trees is important, and what the tag means, I seem to recall there was a property that was supposed to be removed, was interpreted by the tree guy as what stays, and he removed the trees that were supposed to be...
Green or red. Green should be stayed, orange should be gone. Yeah. We'll do something clear there, Caesar.
It wound up the property was clear cut.
Having used a chainsaw a few times, it's very hard to stop. It's a lot of fun.
That's not a story. That really happened.
So in terms of the, the comments that we got from, from Doug so far, you know, the first one is, you know, the force main, which we are developing now, and we'll get you details on the force main. The other one that I just wanted to touch on was the, the Y turn, and just sort of describe what's happening there. So in this, in this drawing, if you can make from this distance, the dotted line here, the dotted line showed the approved Y turnaround. That was part of the subdivision, and you see it goes through...
John, step so I can see. I need to know this.
Yes. So the Y turn sort of filled this cul-de-sac shape right away, and it just followed a standard 60-degree pattern. Right now, in this corner, if you've been up there, there's a path that is the village's, it's like the water, is it a water main path?
There's a water main underneath.
There's a water main underneath it. So there's an existing path between these two trees that goes along this property line. And this leg of this just sort of went into the woods, it didn't align with anything. So what we're proposing here is a, is a T turn that could meet the requirements of the fire engine that it needs to meet the ladder truck, but then wouldn't affect trees and would align and look more natural because it lines up with the path that's already there. So the end of this T turn would align with that path. So the issue that I think Mary Ann or Doug has shown up is we're showing this T turn extending off property into village property here. This is, what we were hoping to do here was gravel also. It's still a gravel road, so the impact again on village property would be really minimal. It's really just taking this road and aligning it with an existing path that's there. So I think the question, the comment that we got is that we would need approval from the board to do that.
Yeah, I mean, because it would be on village property, yeah.
I mean, my concern is, we don't want, we wouldn't want it to be a protracted, extensive one, and we could look for alternatives that somehow slid the whole T turn out, but I think it would have tree impact.
I don't see it being a big issue, but I mean, but there are issues. I mean, if, you know, if it's going on the village property, then you have to talk about indemnification and insurance policies, maybe the other. It's just not like, hey, okay.
Right.
So if there's some way you could work it out without having to do that. I don't, I don't, I can't speak for the village property. I can't imagine it's something that would concern them very much, but you do have to go.
Okay. And the process would be, if, if we leave this board now, the process would be just to request a, what would be, we could talk about it.
Well, I think the thing would be, you'd better make sure you get the approval, because if the whole site plan is developed, is dependent on it, you should get the...
Right, I would think that we would wanna go to the VOT right now, to just to make sure to, to address that one. And so, is there anything that we need from this board for us to do that, or we just, we would just go and start the process with the VOT?
Well, I think what you're proposing there, you wanna propose using the village property, because it's already somewhat cleared, rather than take down additional trees to create that Y.
Right.
There's, there's still, um, easements that may be needed for the sewer main on public property. If they're not gonna run the main that the villages, there's a lot of moving parts on this with the sewer. If they're gonna run the private main down Hermits Road to a certain point, that needs an easement. If they're gonna extend the sewer to the property line and then take it private, that needs approval as well from the trustees. So I think we need to get a little bit more together and take it to them in one shot.
Both, both whatever would be required for the sewer.
Yeah, just try to, easier for the trustees, obviously, in the scope of the work, and doesn't, and not go twice.
My...
Well, it's not a bad idea, though, to make, just make sure they're okay with that before we get to the formal, yeah.
Okay. So that, that would be my, my more concern. If there was, if there were issues that came up or in a public meeting, someone said, there's a reason not to do this, we'd wanna know it now, because it might change the whole configuration of this entrance and affect the engineer. So if, if I could say, I think we should just go, even if it's an informal or...
Yeah, yeah, just to say, you know, I think dispost will allow you to do that. You don't extend it to the formal agreement there.
Yeah, let's do it.
It's dispost.
Try and follow the process.
That's all you need, just do it.
Yeah.
One free climb on the rock wall.
So, so, I mean, in terms of our strategy here, does the board feels that this is, I mean...
Well, I think if you're gonna remove fewer trees, I think it makes sense, yes.
Right, okay.
Did that.
Okay. I'm trying to think if there's other, there's a lot of, a lot of this is related to the proposed engineering on the site. I'm not sure there's other things you need any of this.
Are there any of the comments from any of the board members that want this?
Yeah, Lucille had comments.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask.
Did you get a copy of this chart?
No.
Okay. Uh, let's see. The recommendations are, provide better clarification regarding tree, tree removals and plant coordinations noted above. Consider changing hemlock for another evergreen. Request out, can provide larger plant material as noted above. So you can take my copy of this.
That would be great.
I'll say, I'll read it to you. It says, one, while the tree summary has been provided, it's very difficult to gauge the impacts to the existing trees as on sheet AO point one-two. The applicant should be requested to include proposed grading on this sheet to ascertain impact of trees. In addition, the trees should be numbered on this plan as well, is what we've heard discussed. Tree protection details have been provided. The applicant should be requested to increase the size of evergreen trees from eight feet in height to 10 to 12 feet in height, and the applicant should be requested to reconsider using hemlocks as they suffer from woodie adiligent and are not a good choice due to disease. The applicant should be requested to indicate tree removals on sheet C point one, point O one for consistency. And then the, the recommendations average, so you can take this.
So that would look...
Yeah. Your workers can take a look at that and respond to those, and I think the comments we've made, and they go to the board trustees, you know, what you're proposing doing, see what they have to say.
As far as I'm concerned, the preferred way is the force main, so, because I, I just think with all that rock around, the septic system is, it's gonna be like a bowl of rock and eventually fill up and fail.
Right. I mean, I, I think, yeah, there's, the visual impact too is really pretty rough on it, and, right, whether it's truly feasible. We, we did do test pits for septic back here, but we didn't get up here and confirm that the other developer actually did proper pits in there, but, so, yeah.
Any comments from anyone in the audience? No? No, I think they'll see next time, see what has to say.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item is 2017-06, Tony Barney Park.
It's on a much smaller scale. My name is Chris Fokeen. I'm the interior designer for Mara Residence, Tony Barney Park. And I was here back in April 2017, and I received a letter from Han Engineering to provide a separate site plan from surveyed, and I have it all in one, and include lots of items he asked me to put on there. I've done that. And I just wanted to, just show you guys maybe a photograph that we're trying to do, because drawings are, don't really maybe express it well enough. If I could approach you guys. So basically, this is... I should tape it like I want it to. So essentially, you can see, these are two pop-outs here, to left and right. This is the temporary stair right now to this door. We'd like to build a, a landing across here, so the stairs with a roof over the top of it. That's it, 63 square feet.
Back of the house, correct?
Correct, back of the house, yes.
Because in Han's comments, proposed coverage exceeds the allowable and variances required, so you're gonna have to go for a variance.
Correct, yes.
So the, the board, the ZBA is not meeting in December?
That's correct.
So the next meeting is in January for them. So I think if, if you come back, what, any of the comments that Han's memo for our meeting in January, then you'll be able to go to the, the ZBA in January.
So there are additional, additional comments from, because I did that already. I already, these, these plans already have the comments answered.
Did you see those comments today?
I did not see them today, no. I'm sorry, I left early this morning. I didn't, I didn't get any of that.
So if you respond to this memo, then for January, then you'll be able to go to the ZBA.
You refer me to the ZBA in a little bit.
Right.
We needed some clarification on the coverage. So when you take a look at it, give me a call and we'll...
Okay, I'll, I'll do that. Very good.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Next item is 2016-31, Tony Lewis Road.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name's Tim Cronin, and I'm here tonight to present the revised application for Tony Lewis Road for Dr. Papa Buu and his wife, Mrs. Lala. And I think you're all somewhat familiar with this project based on previous presentations, in particular, the meeting we had in September. But to summarize, as you're, you are aware, over the summer, or last year, Dr., earlier this year, received approval to build a pool in his backyard. Construction commenced earlier this year, and plan modification, modifications were made to the approved plan, and it wasn't built according to the plan, and the actual pool location was shifted slightly. However, it was raised approximately three and a half feet. As a result of that, this, the project was issued a stop work order by the building inspector, and that was sometime over the summer, I'm guessing June, July. And the resubmission was made, we talked about in August, and then because of concerns raised by the planning board, particularly to the, as it related to the elevation of the wall, and the, and the change in grade of the pool, a change in the elevation of the pool, the prior design professional asked us to take a look at that, and we did, and so that there were some issues that we needed to address. We discussed those at the September meeting, and at that meeting, if you recall, we asked the board to allow us to, because the stop work had been issued earlier in the year, the site was pretty much just a lot of exposed earth. We were able to work with, with Mr. Han's office and put together a site stabilization plan, which we did in September, and that work was completed. So based on that, and the comments that were raised at the September meeting, we put together a revised plan where what we've done is keeping the pool in the location it is at, are proposing to reduce the height of the existing stone wall from approximately at its high point five and a half feet, down to an average of three, three and three and a half feet, and one or two spots in the center where it may be close to four. one or two spots in the center where it may be close to four feet. So we're reducing the height of the wall, which will require a reduction in the size of the, the apron area around the pool and a relatively steep slope going down to the top of the wall. I'd like to point out that the initial plan had the pool generally in mislocation, but approximately, well, three and a half feet lower. That required the construction of, of two retaining walls, although smaller than what we have now, a two-foot wall along the back, and I believe a two-foot wall plus or minus along the front. Essentially, by raising the pool, we've eliminated one of the walls, but the wall we have left is, is four feet, hopefully, three and a half to four feet tall. We received comments earlier today from Mr. Han's office, and we had a conversation earlier today where we went through a lot of the points, and I think we have a direction and a way that we can address those that, like I said, it's mostly technical in nature. If the board is willing to accept the wall height being reduced down to three and a half feet, three, three and a half feet, and maybe one spot in the center where this drops off to four, if that's unacceptable, we can put a little bit of fill against the bottom of the wall to make it three and a half. So, I mean, it's, it's an unfortunate situation. You know, Dr. Papapenu is, is, you know, left with a situation now where to move the pool is just, it would just be a cost burden that is, I just don't know where it would go if that was the case. So I think what we have here is, is a, is a fair and good attempt to try to address the concerns of the board, which my impression was at the September meeting that amongst other things, it was the height of the wall, and I think we've addressed that.
Comments?
The height of the wall, plus the, the new height, wasn't designed properly because it was designed for a two-foot wall and built a four, a five-foot wall, and it was a design failure.
Oh, they're going to have to re, pretty much rebuild that wall. That wall's not, you know, they're, they're going to have to excavate everything behind that wall, make the foundation wider, backfill it with stone, you know, some sandy material. That wall, the front of the wall may stay to some extent, but the back of the wall's going to change entirely.
And who's, like, who's doing the site supervision?
I would be doing that.
Any other comments?
Yellow. I did it yellow. Right? This is what we've done, right? We've basically changed the grade there and lowered this, this, this wall, right? More or less?
More or less. I mean, that dash line should actually be a little bit flatter across the top, but I see what you have there correct.
Right. So the big thing about this is that this makes it worse for whoever's up near that pool. This becomes a little gully that someone is going to fall into. So I honestly, this is like a, a big change. For me, I wouldn't do it this way. I think this is going to make it worse for whoever's going to be at that pool.
What would you propose?
Well, it's almost like between this and what you have, it's safer to keep it the way it is. That's how I look at it.
But then it's a.
I, I understand, but I'm just saying that when we were here last, we talked about how this was kind of egregiously built differently than what we've done.
Correct.
Okay? So we, we all understand that, and we were hoping that, at least I was hoping to come back with something that was an ability to make this in a little more sensitive way that's more similar to what was originally designed without causing a potential issue or safety.
Yeah, as far as, I don't know about the rest of the board, but my concern with the revised five-foot wall is, is that it wasn't designed as a five-foot wall.
Correct.
I didn't have, personally, I didn't have a problem with it being five-foot because nobody's going to see it except the people who live there. So I don't know what the rest of the board feels about going back to five-foot if it's properly designed.
What?
To whoever George is concerned.
I have the same issue as George. I think it's a very unsafe condition that that's being created when you can have a forty-five degree slope.
With open fence up there.
Yeah. And, and, but then you have only four feet off the coping of the pool. That's not very wide.
Look, we, I took away from that meeting that there was concern, the biggest thing I heard was that there was a concern about the height of the wall. And what we did is I thought we addressed that. Now, granted, I can appreciate your concern about this steep slope and the limited apron area, but that's what we thought was necessary because we couldn't push the wall out because we have the two holly trees there, so we don't really want to push that out any farther. If the board is amenable, I'd bring that, I would design and have constructed a five-foot wall and bring it up to that elevation there. I mean, that's, that's, we, I think Dr. Papapenu would actually appreciate that because then it does give him the bigger apron area that he wants. Again, the wall's going to have to be, you know, the wall will have to be rebuilt.
You get, no matter what you do, you're going to have to dig out behind that wall.
Oh, yeah. It's a lot of work. It's a lot, it's an awful lot of work.
Yeah, in essence, he's getting what.
What he, what was.
What was, and I don't see a real sensible solution other than, you know, making someone take this out now, actually, in the future. That's.
That's, that would be a challenge.
And I understand that, and so I just think this is not a solution that's, that's helping anyone.
We would, we would prefer rebuilding this wall, making it a five-foot wall and having the apron there as to, you know, whatever it'll be, six, seven feet, maybe eight feet.
I prefer the five-foot wall.
Where are you going to put on the tops so nobody falls off the wall?
Well, this is our, our, our pool fence is going to go on the top.
Have any, have any comments?
No, I agree.
Have the neighbors, I know there's a letter from one of the neighbors, but the two neighbors directly behind here, have they commented because originally there was one neighbor, I forget who it was.
Goldsmith.
Who.
Goldsmith was initially.
Allied lawyers and things like that. Have they seen this and, and said, okay?
We have not presented anything to them, no. But that was the neighbor, I believe, and they are here and here.
They have the fence.
And they have the fence here. They, they were the ones who I believe were initially concerned. But we do have two other letters, one from Siegel right here in favor of finding.
He can't see anything from where he is.
And then actually across the street, that would be.
Can't see anything from across the street.
Gardner. But they're just, they, they, it was more a counter reference than anything, that the Papapenu's were very gracious and not causing difficulty in trying to be, be aware of the, of the project and what they were doing to the neighborhood.
I'd like to be able to get out there and take a look at it. I haven't been out there.
Perfect. When can we go?
I don't know. I don't, I, does anybody else want to go?
You draw up there and twenty, look at it.
You really should go back there and look at it.
I haven't been in the backyard because I didn't want to.
I always think it's sort of, in my opinion, it's sort of responsible for, especially for the, the neighbor that actually hired an attorney to get involved in this, that they're given their due process to understand what, what is being proposed or kind of agreed to in principle for this, so that they, they understand what's going on. I think it's not just what they typical where, hey, here's the meeting, if you want to show up. I think at this point, those people should be, you know, somehow notice that this is, this is what we proposed.
The applicant can meet with them.
What's, what's the normal process? We'll call up the.
Call up the Goldsmiths.
Goldsmith and schedule a time to visit with them?
Yeah.
That's fine. I mean, does the board want to attend that, that gathering, that meeting? I mean, whatever, whatever the board's desire is.
Well, why do this? Why have a, a site visit and invite them? Then that way you kill two birds with one stone.
Absolutely.
That's what you want.
The sixteenth?
That's small.
No, January.
Is that a Sunday?
It's Saturday.
Okay.
I wouldn't make it on a Sunday. Not this Saturday.
Problem with meeting, if with the, if there's three of you there, with you meeting with the Goldsmiths, then, yeah, it gets to be a meeting, you know.
I wouldn't take it at time, but really. You volunteered not to go.
Yeah.
Go at different times.
I can too.
No, you guys can all go, it's no issue. You can do a site visit, but just.
Does it have to be noticed?
Have the Goldsmith separately, have the meeting with the Goldsmith separately.
I'm going to do this.
When you guys get together, get to meet with the Goldsmiths, it's, you're necessarily talking business and then you run into.
I don't know the Goldsmiths, but Ed, if, if you can reach out to them and say, look, you expect a phone call from the engineer, or is that, or should I call them directly?
Yeah, call directly.
Okay. That will do.
You should meet with them and see what they have to say.
That's fine.
Right, and, but, but I'd like to get out there and I, I can make it on the sixteenth.
What time?
Nine o'clock in the morning.
We have to post it, that's why I said.
Yeah.
We've done in the past where someone.
Well, the fifteenth or sixteenth.
Sixteenth is a Saturday.
That's fine. Site, site visit.
Are we talking about December or?
A week from the Saturday, December sixteenth.
December.
My wife will be traveling, but I will be home. So, so, so may I ask something?
You have to come up.
Do you understand? So, listen, you, obviously you remember what happened, and.
I think I'm in the middle of this. I understand that there were these deviations that should not have happened, but this is where we are, and we try, try to make the best out of the situation. So I understand that the wall was not built according to how it should have been built for that height, and if you, do I understand you correctly that your proposal was to retain it the way it is but reconstruct it? This is what you seem to be proposing.
Maintain the top of the wall where it's at and just build a stable wall. But I understand this, it really wasn't just this wall. It's that, helped this up higher than where it was supposed to be.
Yes, sir.
And all this fill and all that kind of stuff. And now it's to a point that, so the only thing, for me, my biggest concern is your neighbors were very curious about what you're doing, to the point that they hired an attorney. That tells me that they were pretty interested in this and that it is important for them to understand also what's going on, so that they don't come back later on and say, let me get it.
Absolutely, but just for the record, the attorneys were involved before we even started building. So there wasn't any sort of concern. I mean, my neighbors have built a pool on the other side of the fence, for the record, two years ago. I mean, they haven't heard anything from me, but that's how it is. So the attorneys were involved from the very beginning when we proposed the pool. Then the pool deviated from what it should be, obviously, and I was sort of the victim of this because nobody told me that what was being approved would lead us to this problem. And then you received this letter from my neighbors that we reviewed in the September meeting, but my impression was not that they were against the project or anything specific that bothered them, I mean, according to the letter. So it's, I don't think that anybody has questioned, like, the visibility of the pool or the fencing or anything like that. So in all honesty, I don't understand why the attorneys had to be involved in the first place. They got involved December of last year before we even started building, and at that point, obviously, there wasn't any problem. So, but I get your point. I mean, they expressed their concern. They, they can, if you want us to invite them to inspect it, but.
No, I would say you just take, take the plans and show them the plans, what's, what's being proposed at this point, and let them come take a look at the, at the yard and see where it is in relation to, to the air yard. And then I'd like to get up there because I haven't, I haven't been back yet, see, see what it looks like.
Yeah, can I just say, show them this plan doesn't make sense because you don't want them to do this.
That is correct. No, they, they can.
Can't you just said, show them this plan, but I.
We'll tell them what we will do.
Right, okay.
And maybe show them this.
I'll, I'll be able to explain to them what, it'll actually be easier for them to, if they see the site, they'll see what it's going to look like, but just in a more stable fashion.
Okay.
Okay, so nine AM, December sixteenth.
Perfect. You'll be there, right?
Okay.
Jim? Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Next item is twenty sixteen, twenty-two, Forty-Eighth Kingsley Close.
I'm the architect for the Edelman's at Forty-Eighth Kingsley Close, and we're here with an amendment to approve a site development plan specifically to add a couple of things. One being an expanded area of coverage of this patio on grade here, the other to add a stone stepping stone walkway here, the third is to flatten out a small section of the yard here. So we're changing the grade, we're bringing in fill. And then they're also proposing a deer fence around the property, and there's a short section of cedar fence here with gates here and here. We've calculated the coverage of the existing, what's existing and what's proposed. The limit for this site was part of the original site development approval process of the subdivision. So this lot, I understand, has been allotted forty-eight hundred square feet of coverage, and we're just under that number now with the proposed additions. We did receive a letter today or yesterday from Han Engineering, and we have responded to it. I'm going to give that to him tonight.
What's, what is the change in the grade where you can put the fill?
We're adding approximately one hundred and forty-seven cubic feet.
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards, I'm sorry. We're just adding about a foot and a half or two feet there.
All the way across that area?
It's from here to here, and then a little section here.
And then which way do the stairs go from the driveway? They go down from the driveway?
They go down, yeah. Down here. I'm sorry.
So it's going to be raising up.
Well, the, the raised, the raised section is really from this topo line to here, so it's, it's just.
The stair doesn't change.
It's only this, it didn't print very well, but it's only this line in here.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from, because it didn't print well.
Yeah, we've created on the computer.
Was there going to be a, a drop-off that needs a wall or?
No, no, part of.
It was hard to tell from the topo.
Yeah, we're spreading the topo out as per his comments, so it's a one to two now.
Then I think there was a comment too that there, there are a couple, are there two trees, I think, that could be impacted by the fill?
Yeah, we have a letter from our landscape designer, and he's laid out the protocol for how the fill will be done, and he's of the opinion that it won't affect the root system there because of, I can, I can.
Yeah, we need the letter. Is he a landscape architect or an arborist or?
Um, I don't, he has those people on staff, but I don't know if he himself has a license.
I think it should be from either landscape architect or, you know, licensed landscape architect or, or, you know, or licensed arborist.
I can go back to him and.
A tree has a very definitive transition between the atmosphere and you put a foot of soil on it, you, I'm not an arborist, but my experience was it's going to kill the tree.
The feeder roots are very close to the surface on a tree as it, as they extend out. So when you start piling dirt on top of that, then you're smothering those feeder roots. So that's why it's important, that's why it should.
There's a name for that transition point, which escapes me. You're not supposed to build up above it.
So that's why it should be from either, you know, instead of registered landscape architect or.
Yeah, I mean, I think his comment does address that very specifically, but I'll find out if he can get that statement as part of the submission.
Yeah. All right, we'll take a look.
Does anybody want to talk about the deer fence?
Do you?
Well, it's pretty expensive. Is it, where would, I, I tried to tell where the roads are, who my cedar fence.
Well, it's a cul-de-sac here, so there's, there's just a driveway that extends here to the last house on the cul-de-sac. So there's a house here, and then there's another house here.
What's, what's in the back?
And this is a drop-off in grade. There's.
What's in the back?
It's a stream. There, there's no houses visibly in the back. It's, it's almost like a, it's like a little, yeah, it's a little ravine and a stream and a, a wetlands there.
Isn't there a pool fence all the way around?
A pool fence?
Is there a pool?
No, no pool.
Oh.
That's a, this is a playset.
Oh.
Good location.
And I think Lucille had comments, didn't she? It might have been what you said, but. You leave it to somebody else, somebody else said Lucille, yeah.
They closed, okay. I review the amended site plans prepared by Studio Azure Architecture PC dated eleven twenty seventeen to the above noted property for paths, retaining walls, fill, fencing, and patio addition and provide my comments as follows. One, the regrading and filling in the rear yard is well within the drip line for twenty-eight inch oak and potentially can impact the health of the tree. Two, the addition of the patio well within the drip, is well within the drip line with thirty-two inch beach and potentially can impact the health of the tree. Recommendations, one, the applicant should be requested to provide tree protection details. Two, the applicant should be requested to indicate the amount of grading and filling around the tree and provide an arborist report with regard to health and condition of the tree and assessment of the proposed impact of the filling. The applicant should be requested to provide an arborist report on the condition of the beach and assessment report on the impacts of the proposed patio within the drip line.
Okay.
Do we have some standards of how to review what the fill looks like so it's not contaminated from the gas station? Is there a review procedure for bringing?
Can't help it with gas station?
Is there a review, look, review procedure?
We asked for a certification document.
You're aware of that?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
It's per standard.
There was another applicant that wasn't aware of that.
Well, he wasn't, he didn't propose to have any fill on the site.
Previous?
He didn't have, it was a net zero site.
Oh, okay.
When it was approved by the board originally.
But he brought fill in.
Right. Yes. Dozens of trucks.
And that was not reviewed?
Yes, we didn't get, oh, we haven't got, this is part of the whole problem of that property.
You still haven't gotten the document, because there was some.
He's got some documents, but they're not, they're not certified.
I forgot about that aspect of the.
When you guys approved it originally, we didn't need him, so we were looking for him. And so he's provided as part of this renew process, but they weren't accepted by the board.
Let's not forget that aspect. Reviewing whatever we thought is.
No, I'm sorry, digress here for a minute, but for your project, I think you should take a look at those comments and address those comments and address Doug's comments.
Okay.
I'll see you.
See you. When is next time around?
January third.
Okay.
Or it's Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Twenty seventeen dash thirty-five, sixteen North Astor Street.
That review will get back before the next step. Ah, there's stuff all over the place.
Good evening, my name is Lucinda Stoll, I'm an architect and I'm representing Julius Diemets who purchased sixteen North Astor Street last summer. The, just, I'll give you a little tour of the site. The building is right across from the Metro North Station and the coffee shop here. It fills the entire site except for about six inches in the front of the building at the sidewalk. This is the building here and the two houses on the side and the new residential structure with lower level parking is next door. And then the parking lot on the, is on the corner. The building is actually quite an old building and it, the front face of it hasn't changed very much except for the retail section down below. There, it's very odd in the back. There is actually a first floor that goes all the way back to a retaining wall where there's a cliff up to the streets on Buckhorn, up to the houses on Buckhorn Street. There are a couple of different levels in here. The main building is three stories here and then this part in the back is two stories with two different roof lines. We have a roof line that is from the front here sloping towards the back. Then we have a gable that goes in opposite directions here and then another gable down here. Brought some pictures of the street view here so you can see the context. The building is currently used, there are a couple of retail spaces down below and then up above had been used for offices for years. Originally, this was a building that was, a business that sold flour and hay and, what else does it say? And straw. We actually have a photo of it that is in eighteen fifty-seven. It shows that the building had, originally had retail across the bottom with a nice awning. And then the upper floors appear to be offices exactly the way the building looks now, except that there was a grain elevator at the top on this side, which is no longer there. Some photographs just to show the beautiful details around the windows and at the cornice. We have nice corbels and recessed panels and we're planning to restore and keep all of those. We do new windows and then we are proposing that we will keep a first floor retail and we will update the facade to look more like it did in eighteen fifty-eight. The, there's some, would appear to be original pilasters along the facade here and we would keep those and our new facade would be infill in these areas that are not in keeping with the building, the historical aspect of the building.
What was there currently, three stores there now?
There, there are two doors.
Stores.
I know, there are two doors and it appears that this store extended into this area here.
Okay, then you're gonna wind up with two stores.
Yes, we are. This actually was at some point a driveway into the building. There's an existing curb cut here and this has been infilled between two of the, these existing pilasters that I was talking about. I put together some of the photos of the back of the building since this isn't something that you would normally see. You can see this is the line of the third floor. It's gently sloping down from the corbels at the front of the building. And this is that gable that I was talking about that is the second floor section that bumps up to the original third floor brick section. And you can see it's covered with exhaust fans and mechanical equipment and old skylights. This, here's the old skylights, this is an existing chimney and then you can see all of the mechanical equipment across the back here, it's not very pretty. So that's kind of the existing conditions. Our proposal, what Julius Diemets would like to do is to reduce the size of the building in the back by about a little over a thousand square feet here. And make a roof garden here at the roof level above the first floor garage that we're proposing. And then also make a second floor roof garden here, so it's a stepped roof garden effect in the back. The reason for this is that in plan we're proposing to reactivate the driveway and the curb cut that exists and bring parking into the back space of the building here, grade. Keep two rental spaces at the front with this one entering through here and this one here. And then to renovate the two upper floors of the house, of the building to create two apartments. The apartments would be, there's a one bedroom and a two bedroom being proposed. This is the second floor. The one bedroom apartment would be this side here. The two bedroom apartment would be this side and then the entire third floor, which you can see is much smaller. This is that original front portion of the building. This is the front of the building and then this is the third floor apartment.
The third floor will be a separate apartment or part of the second?
Part of the second floor apartment on the lower side. Hello, this is Julius Diemets.
It looked like, from the architectural place, it looked like you had to go into a common hallway to get from the, to get from the two bedroom, the apartment on the, on the lower side. To get to the second floor, you had to go into a common hallway to get to it, there was no staircase terminal to the apartment to get to it.
No, there, this staircase would be accessing both apartments on this floor and then when you get to the upper floor, it would only access, access the upper floor.
So you had to go into a common hallway then, that's what I'm saying.
It's not contiguous.
To get to the second floor of that apartment.
The third floor of the building, the second floor of that apartment.
Well.
Right, because the other unit has access to that hallway too and that's the only way you can get upstairs.
Yes, we would do something in this lobby to create a privacy between the two. That's something we still have to develop.
But as you pointed out, there's a zoning issue.
Now, that might work if they divide the hallway differently. Our concern is making sure that they're contiguous to each other.
Yes, I understand.
So the way you enter, I live on the top floor. I invited you over. I have to, it looks like I have to go through the garage to get upstairs.
No, you have this entrance here. You could come in here. There'd be a buzzer here that would allow you to walk upstairs.
Up the stairs.
And if you needed the elevator, obviously you would, you would come in with your friends. So.
So if you needed the elevator, you'd have to come in through either one of the commercial units or you have to come through the garage.
You'd come in through the garage as a friend, I imagine. So, in changing the use, if we'd have a, we have to apply for a use variance to have residential units in the business district, we're required to.
No, just on the first floor, we don't have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was the whole thing.
You need variance for coverage, yeah, but now you use variance.
No, you, just the change of use.
Oh, just a change of application.
Sorry?
A change of use, a change, we sent back your change of use application.
Sorry, I didn't see, I didn't receive it.
Okay. Don't need, there's a change of use, change of use slash occupancy application that's needed for the tenants once you have the tenants.
Oh, okay.
You don't need anything for upstairs because you're here at the planning board to get approval.
Okay.
So that approval will cover that.
Will cover part of that, okay. So we're required to have one parking space on site for the one bedroom apartment and one and a half for the two bedroom apartment. Parshals don't count, so we have provided three parking spaces within this enclosed garage. As I said, we, the existing footprint of the building is a hundred, basically a hundred percent coverage, which we're, I think, only allowed seventy percent coverage is what we'd need the variance for.
It's existing, as it exists now, it's a hundred percent covered?
Yes, it is.
You're not changing it, you don't need variance for coverage?
I don't. Mr. Hunt, we did.
Because it's a change of use.
Oh, new building? Oh, the change, yes, okay. It's a new building, it's not.
It's not a new building, no.
That's the.
We're actually reducing the size of the existing building.
So you're keeping fifty percent?
No. Okay, we'll have to talk about that.
The use, the use for.
It's all interesting.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, we'll have Mary in.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Well, so our proposal is that we have three onsite parking spaces with access through the existing curb cut and the, what was at some point a driveway into the building. It appeared that we had, let's see, there are diagonal parking spaces in front of the building and it appeared that we could have relief from our parking requirement for one space for every twenty-four feet of frontage on the street where parking was provided. We would request to have relief of one space that we would be required to have because we're eliminating this one that was put in front of our curb cut. Is that clear?
We had, we asked in her memo to do a existing parking requirement and a proposed parking requirement to understand it better.
Yeah.
So I think.
I actually did that?
Well, so maybe so they get a chance to look at it.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, so.
What's in that code, code existing required?
Well, I believe that what's required is, is three and a half because of the two apartments.
No, 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 okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, sorry.
And that, but that we're eliminating one that was put in front of our curb cut to, in order to reactivate our curb cut. But there's a portion of the code which says that.
Yeah, I'm going for this, commercial square footage.
Okay.
How many spaces are there?
Hang on, that.
Parking, it's a requirement for that and the apartments versus the existing requirement for all the commercial area. It should show.
Okay, so, well, there was a notation in the code that because our retail area existed prior to nineteen forty-eight, we actually aren't required to provide any retail parking.
I understand.
But that's not what you're asking, is it?
What the board needs to understand.
Yes.
And it'd be beneficial because that's probably where you may need a variance.
Okay, so, since I'll be the one doing it, if you've already, if you've already, if you've got a set of stuff to hand out, it's not ready for the board yet, but I'll take a look at it. Okay, thanks. Would it help you to have the square footage of usage also? I did that as well. Sort of the comparison of what we had, what we're supposing. So, if we're allowed to have a full coverage, which is what the existing footprint is, our thought was that by reducing this back portion of the second floor, we provide daylight and access from the second floor, these two second floor apartments out onto the, this rear roof garden, which then gives both the one bedroom and the two bedroom apartment access to the easement through the neighboring property for fire egress. And that's actually, in your package, it's one of the easements that exists on the site. So that way, the roof garden on this side is only two feet above grade here and on this side it's three and a half feet here. So it's a safer means of egress than if we actually took part of the building down and created a grade level, lack of coverage.
I mean, you're providing a step and.
Yes, there's gonna be just a little ladder there. We have a tiny little, you can see a tiny little bit of space there where that, that door is, or that gate is. And that would be a gate through the fence at the edge of the roof garden. And then the upper apartment would be able to come out and down this stair if. And then the upper apartment would be able to come out and down this stair if it's the same apartment as this one, and you'd be able to come out and access through here as well. The front elevations, we've, oops, proposed storefronts that are similar to the one that you saw in this historical photo. And then in the back, we proposed a more contemporary look, which allows us to exit the upper floor on this floor, and then out to the easement area here. And this is grade on the building next door.
Is that two doors?
There's a door here and a door here. And then the garage door is here. So we have the, sort of a clear story across the top here, and then sort of very traditional storefronts on those two locations.
The roof garden, 1807, I mean, I know they overdesigned things back then, but is anybody going to look at the structural integrity to hold a roof garden?
But we're going to be reframing most of that floor because as it is now, you can So this is the original portion of the building here, that front masonry part here. The back here, there are several steps, two steps up from roof level to this level, and we'd like it to be all the same. So when the roof is removed, this floor will be reframed, and it would be reframed for the loads required for the two roof gardens.
Twenty-one feet worth for legal light and air? Setback? There's a, there's a lot of technical detail that needs to get done.
Absolutely.
Right, I don't think that's the age yet.
No.
I'm actually...
No, I meant more about the setback, is that, is that legal?
Well, have windows on the side, you have to have two-foot sprinkles on both buildings.
I'm talking about the rear, rear yard.
The rear yard, yeah, you only need two feet. Of all light fence, for angle light?
For legal light in the area, for bedroom.
Yeah, it's planned for the bedroom, because a bedroom only needs 8%. But if...
In a city, I got to have 30 feet, okay, from our property line to, to, to a window.
That's the city code, though.
Right, I know.
Yeah, we don't have the code. All we have is 8%. It doesn't, there's no angle, there's no nothing.
Yeah.
It's the state code, it's not special terms. But there's a lot, there's a lot of concern because the structure, is there any comps needed in the garage, things like that? How do we, how we batter and support the neighboring properties? If there's any excavation on the basement, how do you deal with the drainage? So, there's, there's a lot to do, yeah.
There is...
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to, I just, because, I'm not, you know, I just want to make sure that the board understood that, that's, that detail's not even related to this discussion.
So Steve, no, just, no, this is just for me, I'm sorry. For state code, I can have a window two feet away from property line.
If the both sides, no, no, not a bedroom for light, you said calculate light and air.
Light and air, yeah.
Light and air.
Make a legal light and air, make that a legal bedroom.
Remember they used to allow shafts with the angles in the state code, and then New York State took it away?
Yeah, I know the state, but, so here you can be that close?
You can touch it. For like, for egress, it's different than light vent, though. You have to have an egress window in New York State, and that egress window has to have, go to legal open space, and that's the conversation we're having about that staircase, believe it or not. That, I don't know, I'm not cool about it, but...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I got not to travel away from it. There's difference between light vent and egress, too. The back window in the back will give them the light vent and the egress.
It's all, all doors.
Yeah, because they say they did it so you lose dumbbells, and they, it's happened in 1940, whatever, that you had to be back, there had to be enough gaps so that someone could look out and see something.
That doesn't exist in New York state code, no. This is a great thing.
Getting back to how it looks, at what point, I'm assuming the Architectural Review Board has to look at this because it's historical.
They're required because...
At what point in the process, before we get filed up in procedures of not going there and then going there and...
Okay, they have, they do, should go there preliminarily because this constitutes under the definition of demolition because they're changing the front of the building, it's changing a substantial part of a building facing the street. That's not your final ARB approval. You should, you should go, and there's no reason, I don't think, that they can't go parallel with this, that you could go to the ARB and just, all they say is we're okay with the demolition. They're not going to be...
Well, what about the way it's going to look at the street level?
Pardon?
I would be more concerned of what it looks like from the street.
Yeah, but that's, that's different, then it'll go to them later. You could ask them, though, if you, if you want to know that sooner, you can...
She showed it already, yeah.
No, 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 no. If you want to know the ARB's opinion of it before you rule on it, you can ask them of that. But ordinarily, it would happen at the end of the process. The only reason they would be going early on this is because they have to get that threshold permission for the demolition.
Why do you go and bouncing back and forth?
Well, they're going to go, they're going to go twice, I mean, you know...
They have to go for the demolition, and then they have to go back.
That's what happens when you, in the historic...
But we can ask, if we have to go for demolition, we could ask for their comments, too, on the plans.
On what it looks like from the street.
Right. I think it looks pretty good.
Yes.
It's a really nice job.
Thank you.
And a nice presentation, too.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
So we do, as the building inspector said, we have lots to figure out, but we wanted to come to you early and make sure that this was the kind of proposal that you were interested in having in this location in Irvington.
Yeah, I think you're preserving an historic building in the village, and I think you're making it look better.
We're also reducing the parking load because, but if we had offices there still, you have to have one space for every 200 square feet, which would be between, depending on how you count it, between 36 and 40 parking spaces. And instead, we require three for the apartments, and we're putting them inside the building. So it felt like it was a good thing for that location, where I know you're stressed about parking, as are all the towns in Westchester now, yeah.
Any other comments from the board at this point? Any comments from anyone in the public? Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Han? I'm Christina Almenino, and I own the property at 20 North Astor Street, which is directly north of your property. And I have a few concerns. My house was built during the Civil War, and it is virtually inches away from the property at issue here. So I have concern, it's a little yellow townhouse. I have concerns about excavation and demolition and how it might affect my property. I have another concern, I couldn't quite follow the discussion about the roof gardens, but I currently have nothing in your property that overlooks my backyard. And once you put in the roof gardens and the apartments, will there be windows overlooking my backyard, or will the roof gardens themselves have people in them overlooking my backyard?
There will not be any windows on the property line, because the building is right on the property line, that would be a problem, legal, or a building code problem. The roof garden, we haven't developed the ideas of the roof garden yet, but I think that the tenants and people who live there would be very happy to have privacy between the two properties. And so the idea would be either screening of some kind of green, you know, something that, like, you'd build a little fence and allow things to grow on it. I think, in effect, your view would be so much nicer because all of that mechanical equipment that's on that ugly roof now would be gone. So the, the view, what you would see instead is some kind of screen wall and, and vegetation. And the idea wouldn't be to look over into your yard, but to be focused inward on the, on the two roof gardens. But we'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Yeah, maybe we can do that.
And come to a mutually good conclusion so that everybody's happy and feels like it's an improvement, which is what we're trying to accomplish.
Are you creating, right now, adjacent to my property, it's the rear of your building, and it's only one-story, that is along your northern...
Correct.
The northern property line. Are you creating a higher structure?
No, no, it's all going to be lower.
It's still one, will be one. And will that be the parking garage?
Yes, so it will be actually lower because now it's, it's actually kind of two levels there. And what we're taking out is the upper level, and it'll only be one level there. So you should get more light from the east and the south.
That was my concern, that if you increase the height of what is currently a one-story, it would block light coming into the yard.
Sure, no, that is not what we're doing.
And then the other concern was, parking is very congested in the downtown, and in fact, the board has considered, over the, across many meetings, rearrangements to the parking in the downtown area. And I know you've been discussing a pre-existing curb cut, but across the many years that I've owned my property, there has not been a curb cut. There has been diagonal spaces in front of the building. So if you, if there will be a curb cut, then that would eliminate, would it eliminate one or two parking spaces to create the entry to the garage?
If you look at this photo, there actually is a curb cut existing here, but a parking space has been put in front of it. So literally, we wouldn't have to change that in order to have access through a new garage door.
Well, you would eliminate what is now perceived to be one of the diagonal spaces.
One parking space, that's correct. But we're providing three inside, and we no longer have any office people coming to work there. So we're actually reducing the load of parking on the street because of the change of use that we're requesting.
There, there are dumpsters there, right, in front of the curb, right?
Yes, there is one right here.
The dumpster's gone. No, I was just wondering who they belong to, the dumpster.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
No, that's the end of my comments.
Oh, okay. You mentioned the utilities will be coming off the roof, you're not putting any new ones that'll be visible from the street?
No. We'd like to, if we can work it out with the existing curb cuts, if we can work it out, we'd like to bury the utilities coming in, the electrical lines coming in. But we're not close to figuring that part out yet. We've got lots of other things to get approved.
Any comments? No? She can go to the ARB then, for the demolition permit.
And, and I'm not saying they need to do it right away, but they should understand that they would have to go to the Board of Trustees, if they got permission to remove a street parking space.
Okay.
Remember how we had to do it for the Nardot project? For what?
Well, for Russe on South...
Well, yeah, but more importantly, the, the Nardot project and eliminating the ones that brought in. They would have to get an okay from the Board of Trustees to eliminate their parking space.
Okay, is there a particular application to file for that, or we just get on the agenda?
Well, I would do a send a letter saying, saying what you want to do.
Okay. Is this generally a proposal that you are positively disposed towards? Should we be able to answer everyone's questions? Do you feel like it's a good idea?
It may, yes, yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Great, thank you. So we'll go to the ARB, we'll talk to the trustees, we'll answer the questions we've gotten from Mr. Han, and then we'll come back with those answers.
And I assume you're hiring, you're hiring an engineer for this?
Oh, yes, I have an engineer that I work with.
Yeah, some of our concerns are the bull impact.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, there's a lot of engineering concerned.
Yeah, and we'll...
And he will be retained during construction.
Yes, and I, and I will be doing the site supervision. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is 2017-347 Gray Rock Terrace.
Do you still have my picture?
Yes, we do.
The trustee room.
Thank you.
Did you get that from the historical site?
I don't know, Julia found, got it, I think when she closed on the property, someone had it. We actually have the original. Mr., Mrs. Robert McBride, it says on his...
John McBride in that conference.
Oh, yes?
Thank you, looks good.
The horse and buggy take up much more room than the car.
Hi, Douglas McClure for Seven Gray Rock Terrace. I'm the architect for the Davises. It's a fairly straightforward project. The existing house is, it says it's two-story framed, it's a cape. The upstairs, as you can see in this plan, only has two bedrooms right down the middle where there's barely enough headroom, because it's a fairly low, low-roofed house. The client would like to increase their second floor and make it a more usable second floor, so our proposal is to take off the roof, raise it up a few feet so we can get seven and a half feet at the, or seven feet, seven and a half feet at the, at the perimeter, and get three bedrooms upstairs, and make it a more usable second floor. Along with that, they would like to increase their garage, which is now a very, very small single-car garage. They'd like to push it out and make it a two-car garage. Increasing the volume of the house does not, we're still within the range of our FAR. However, we will need to go for a variance for coverage because of the increase of the garage size. I guess that's the overview. We got some comments from Doug. They are mostly engineering, and I've spoken to the engineer about all of them. He's already working on them, they're not very complicated. There is a couple of questions I had about them, which I can, we can go through now, or I can talk to Doug offline. One of them, though, was... Let me see if I can find it now. Number nine, the stormwater system has been designed to treat the proposed driveway and new garage. The plan should be revised to reflect how stormwater from the proposed garage addition will be collected. On the engineer's plan, there's a note that says all proposed roof leader drains to connect to pipe. It's for the cul-de-sacs.
Is that just for the new portion?
That's just for the new portion.
So it looks like, right now, everything pitches to the one roof leader. So what's it going to do when it, when you put, add the addition, isn't it all going to go to the one corner? How are you going to separate it?
For the new roof? We'll, we'll be putting on all-new gutters and leaders that'll tie into the, the new system.
Where the roof leader's going to be for the new?
For the new garage or for the whole house?
For the new garage.
For the new garage. We'll have leaders on this side, so that will pitch to this side.
So everything's going to stay the same, except you're going to capture the new?
Exactly.
Okay, so just make sure it's clear on there, rather than a note, because that's a contract you're going to know, with just a note, he's going to have to pitch it one way...
Okay.
And then pitch it the other.
Okay.
Contractors don't read notes.
Any comments from anyone?
Mine do.
They only look at pictures.
Are you taking down the existing garage?
Originally, I was trying not to, but it, it made no real sense. So we're going to take it down and reframe it.
It, it, it looks pretty good. Rather than, you know, putting a double door there and having a prominent feature of the double door in front of the house, the way it looks is, is better.
Thank you. I don't like the big, large doors, I like two private doors.
Yeah, especially, that becomes the thing to see in the front of your house.
Exactly.
You softened that by splitting it.
Yeah, and then the, before I added the dormer, too, it looked a little...
Black house.
Yeah.
Any other comments? No? Any comments from anyone in the audience? No, I guess you addressed these, Doug, I guess, because you're going to have to go for a variance, but you're going to have to respond to these questions first, because the...
Yeah, these...
They're going to meet until January.
Right, so what I'm hoping is I can meet you guys, the next meeting, and then go straight to get the variance.
Okay.
Very good.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
And last but not least, 2017-37, 12 Beachwood Road.
Thank you for coming to me, so I'm shifting a little because I have been a good one.
So I'm shifting over here because I have wing, bird, wing. Point two. Thank you very much. This is an application for twelve Beachwood Road.
State your name.
Too far?
The, the apartment.
I know, I have a loud voice.
Yeah, just state your name, just...
Stephen Bessini, the architect.
A little further.
I'm that loud, huh?
Can you move the microphone?
I'm too loud, you're saying? Okay.
Yeah.
Stephen Bessini.
Great.
The architect for the applicant, the Hersheimer's. Uh, this is a property that is next door to another application I presented about a year ago for a patio and a deck. You might be familiar with it also, I think, believe they came to the planning board and the ARB for a renovation to the back of the house about a year ago as well. But needless to say, it's a very similar lot to the one next door. Situation is the driveways, you can see, comes into the middle of the lot and the house is stuck to one side right up against the setback, even though they have all this property over here. Typical ways, these were designed back in, in the day because you have a slow property and you need to meet the, the ground, the lower level with the driveway. So they shifted off and they have it angled in. Problem is, is that this portion of the property becomes unusable. So, little background on the reason why they would like to expand their deck, which is the application. Okay, so currently have a twelve-foot by thirty-foot deck in the back here. They don't really use this area over here nor can they, it slopes off, it's on the other side of the driveway. And they don't have a walkout at their lower level in the back, so they're not gonna put a patio out there. This is really where they entertain, so they just wanna expand it a little bit. Uh, what they're doing is they propose to put a five-foot addition, but basically a reconstruction of the deck. It's not in good shape. Uh, it's currently closed in on the bottom for some storage, which is in shantels as well. So they really wanna just rip this off and put a new square deck, thirty by seventeen, rebuild the steps coming down to the driveway. Uh, what that requires is a variance into the rear yard. Now, there was a question and, um, first of all, let me just give you the heights on this, although I don't have any elevations of this, but it's about six feet here above grade at the corner of the deck and here it's about eight feet. Uh, as this property slopes down, this might be about eight and a half, nine feet high there and maybe about six and a half feet high there as the property slopes. Uh, we received comments from Mr. Han and one of them I wanted to address because there was an issue, I'm sorry, I'm using your calendar.
Yes, sir. I'm, I... Thank you, appreciate it. But the coverage, and I spoke with Will, who wrote the memo, and I double-checked my calculations and, uh, there was one thing I did leave out.
This is actually just a breakdown, same drawing here, but a breakdown of all the actual coverage items on here, the walls, patios, walkways, deck, patio in the back. Uh, I did not include the walls. I had them drawn on here, but I didn't include them. Uh, what that does is it does increase the coverage, but it still does not put it above the allowable, uh, the required, rather, maximum. So I have these and I know I have to resubmit again, but if anybody wanted to see this now, because I know you'd be, you'd, uh, address this, but I'm underneath the coverage by, uh, by point three percent and by, let me see, it's thirty-one, thirty-seven, I will be providing thirty-two hundred is the max. So I'm still underneath that. Uh, there's also a data entry error on the actual application on the, uh, the FAR form, which is the application data sheet. The, um, FAR was labeled at one, uh, one amount in one area and another in the other area. The correct amount is thirty-eight hundred, but regardless, it still does not exceed the FAR and we're not increasing that with the deck. Um, so there are other items on there, they wanna see the deck drawings. If this board doesn't mind, I'd like to see what the variance is achieved first before I submit, prepare the actual deck drawings and the elevations. I know the ZVA may ask for it, I probably would have an elevation of it, not the full set of deck drawings.
How about...
What's that?
How about just do?
I have a month and a half, right?
How about do?